This is a test of the city of Palaca audio system.
Into Ora, we're here for the special call City Commission meeting on August 27th at 6:00 P. M. We're going to start with a special call meeting notice please Ms. Krantz.
The Commissioners Tammy McCaskill, Justin Campbell, Rufus Borum, and Will Jones. You're hereby notified this special called meeting, public meeting of the Black City Commission is hereby called to be held on August 27th, 2024 at 6:00 P. M. Or immediately following the German employees bench board whichever occurs later. Um, the purpose of the meeting is for negotiations with police benevolent association. Immediately following the public meeting reference above a closed private executive session of the black city commission will be held at the black city hall annex two oh five north second street black Florida three two one seven seven. The purpose of the session is discussion and direction collective bargaining negotiation police benevolent association. Please govern yourselves accordingly. Sign Robert M. Curry, Mayor.
Thank you. We're going to start by standing for the invocation by Pastor Movering the pledge of allegiance by Commissioner McCaskill.
Good evening everyone. Father, we thank you once again for the opportunity to come together. We thank you for how good you have been all day long. We pray God that you would give guidance on this board in the meeting to each and individual. Pray to God for your directions, your instructions, and for what things we must do to move forward in this city. Pray God that every decision be made, be made God for your glory. We're going to thank you and praise you in advance for all that you're doing for us. Tina bless the work of our hands as we look to you even the more. Bless us now God I pray in Jesus name. Amen.
Amen. Follow me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, visible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please Ms. Krantz.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Tammy McCaskill.
Here.
Commissioner Justin Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner Will Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Rufus Borum is not present for the record, but we were expecting that Madam Mayor, um, and yourself.
Present.
We have corpsmen chambers.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to open the floor to public comments. Public comments are limited to three minutes, please, and At this time, I'm going to open the floor to public comments. Public comments are limited to three minutes, please, and give your city of residence for the record. Is there anybody here for public comments? Seeing none, we'll close public comments and we'll go on to regular business negotiations with the police benevolent association. Mr. Bell or Ms. West, who's going to start?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, so in response to the, the discussion that occurred at the, the last, uh, meeting that we had in reference to the police benevolence contract, there was a, a request to have an op or to provide an opportunity for the representative of the police union to be able to be present and, uh, provide, uh, information concerning the, uh, requests in the contract and provide an opportunity for the commission, bless you, the commission to be able to, uh, ask questions. And so that's what was the impetus behind this meeting. And so I'd like to defer to the, uh, attorney who's representing the union in this case.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Is the mic on? Excuse me.
Good afternoon, everybody, uh, mayor, uh, commissioners. I'm Greg Forehand. I always get labeled that attorney. Um, I am an attorney. I've been an attorney since ninety seven. Uh, my connection to Platte because I was a prosecutor here with Joe Boatwright back in the early two thousands. Uh, my son works for the Saint John's Water Management District here in town. Um, I am the representative of Coastal Florida P B A for the Palatka Bargaining Unit because I'm the guy that lives just up the road in Green Coast Springs. Our office is in Daytona Beach. Um, the reason you see an attorney is not because you need an attorney here, but because I'm the close guy that's local to you. Um, I've been doing, um, public sector labor law since twenty thirteen. Um, I am a rep for all of our local units that are towards the north, including nearby Saint Augustine. Uh, I will tell you initially that when we started negotiations, we had started, um, uh, the members had looked at the Saint Augustine Collective Bargaining Agreement kind of as a guide for where to go. Um, all that being said, let, let me tell you why, um, it, it's something that a lot of people go, why all of a sudden are, you know, do we have a union? Um, in this case, um, there was a strong concern, um, that the previous mayor, um, there was an individual, I don't know, it was before my time, but concerned that an officer might get let go, uh, fired from his career for reasons that wouldn't justify termination. And that's what spurred the desire to, to bring a police union in. Um, I will tell you that your police chief is well respected. Um, there is no dissension among the ranks concerning him. Uh, he's well liked and respected. I will tell you that in working with a lot of the small police departments like Palatka, I try to view it as more of a, of a partnership in a lot of ways. Um, that being said, we've come here to negotiate the first contract. Um, I'm here to answer any questions you may have, and I would, at this time, let to let you guys ask me anything you'd like.
Okay, Commissioner Campbell, do you have any specific questions with the attorney? Commissioner Jones?
Yeah. So, Mr. Forin, uh, I did ask some of the questions in the past and, uh, I asked of the chief who gave me his thoughts on, uh, and I want to say it on the record that I'm pro-police and law enforcement is MS. Uh, and I was kind of wondering, it almost felt like a slap in the face with the benefit package that the city of Palatka offer. And I know from experience and visiting other law enforcement agencies around, and you probably be able to concur or not. Uh, with our pension program, uh, that's not, not like any other around. We, uh, we treat our officers pretty good. Uh, they're going to be a thing or two that, you know, that they may request that they may want. But I was just trying to figure out, and you just answered one of the questions, the reason why, you know, I guess that's a fear. That's almost like a fear factor. But other than that, if it comes to benefits, what are, what are some of the things that they really want or cause them to, uh, at this point, be it kind of like out of stalemate, I just would like to, so we could kind of like beat through the chase. What is it?
Well, uh, let me first explain that it, the, the driving factor truly was in predominantly the ability to get what we call just cause in the contract so that nobody could lose their job, uh, you know, unfairly or politic for political reasons. The other thing that I want you to understand, um, the, the benefit of whether we have a contract or not of them being union members is when a police officer is involved in a shooting, a lot of people don't realize that that officer is immediately under criminal investigation for murder. Um, I, I don't know how, um, your city does it. I don't, I, I understand you guys haven't had a shooting incident in a long time, but a lot of agencies will bring in F D L E or sometimes the local sheriff's office. We represent the officers the minute they're involved in a shooting. Um, we come out, we give them support in the middle of the night, and we're there to defend them and represent them because they are criminally investigated. Um, that being said, um, the, kind of the, the, the two little things, and I call them little because I see it everywhere, that, that they said is aside from the job protection, um, they wanted a take home cars, more range on them. For the life of me, and I, and I'm a former police officer, for the life of me, I don't know why anybody would want to have a police car in their driveway. That being said, for new officers, it's like the most important thing that they care about, and I see it in every agency. Um, we've asked for, I think it's thirty, um, thirty air miles for a take home car. Um, for a lot of these young officers, obviously, they're police officers, they're not attorneys, they're not making a, a ton of money. Uh, having a vehicle where they can go to and from work is a, is a big financial asset to them. And then the other thing that, that came up was the, the window tinting. Um, this is the only city that I've ever saw where police officers' vehicles weren't window tinted or basically almost required to be window tinted. Um, as a former police officer, I will tell you that, aside from the fact that it keeps the car cooler in our hot summers, it is a safety factor. Um, I can tell you about two incidents where police officers were killed because somebody walked up to the side of their vehicle while they were looking at their computer and shot and killed the officer. With window tinting on the side, if a bad person can't see whether or not the officer's looking at them or not, they're less likely to do it. And then obviously, from a patrol standpoint, when you're driving around with tinted windows, people don't know whether you're looking at them or not. Um, but again, the driving factor to all this was the getting some insurance that they wouldn't lose their career um, unless they did something justified of them being terminated. Um, I will tell you that the take home vehicle aspect is going to be one, and from what I've seen, one of the best ways bang for the buck for a city to recruit new officers. Um, as you may know, the city of Jacksonville just said, we're going to start our police officers at sixty five thousand dollars. Um, in the last couple of weeks, the city of, of, uh, Jacksonville Beach, which is one of the small cities attached to Jacksonville, they just raised their officers to sixty five thousand. Officers when, with experience can start at sixty nine, and within a couple of years, they're making seventy three. Um, Neptune Beach is following, following the same tune. Um, I can tell you that, um, Atlantic Beach, which is one of our units, uh, in the next, I think, two days on Thursday, they're going to have a vote to do the same thing. Palatka is a great city, but like all cities, you're not made of money. Um, I think, uh, the take home car provision gets you your best recruiting tool for the least amount of money. Um, there is, it's unheard of in my lifetime, the arms race to pay money to get qualified police officers. Um, I could tell you that Saint Augustine's at fifty eight thousand dollars. Um, and I can also tell you that the, the benefit package here, um, it's, it, it, it's not, it's not one of the best at all, but, okay, there are other cities with much more money. There's other cities such as Cocoa that have utilities monies which are, which are great.
Let's talk about our region because you go into Cocoa, that's a tourist town, so you know that we can't compete with, uh, Cocoa. And, and here's my take, and I, that's why I wanted our union and labor law in here because, of course, that's not my title. But as common sense, and we, we talk in common sense of what we can and cannot do, you know, we're not going to be able to pay sixty thousand dollars for the salary to officers at this time. Maybe we continue to grow because our population has remained the same or lower.
Right.
In, in, in probably the last ten, ten years. So when you start talking and selling those kind of points to a workforce, particular workforce, that, that's, that's kind of like, uh, that, that really causes some of the problem as I see it here on the status. Um, again, I'm for giving our officers what they need to do their job. Going back to the both points, because I know you could go on and on with examples, but you were going to a different region that I didn't want to speak on. Um, we're talking about neighboring counties, surrounding municipalities the way we are. Um, you mentioned Jacksonville, you mentioned, uh, maybe Saint Augustine, I believe it's probably Saint Augustine Beach, I don't know. But those areas, let's say Saint Augustine, because I know they're within thirty nautical air miles.
Right.
Guess what? If, if the salary is sixty thousand, we're not going to get those guys anyway. So I don't care if we let them take it home and, uh, ride around town. Sixty thousand dollars in your pocket is going to be the car that will just be taken home for gas. So you, that, that's not a, that's not a, to me, logical, a reason to, to, to choose a take home car versus what goes home and I could actually buy groceries with. And so that's what you're saying, those, those officers, and I would too, you're a former officer, wants, wants that money going home. Um, I just think when, when it, I'm not going to say I'm pro-union, but I am for have we can negotiate and make this a win-win for them understanding this city size, uh, our tax base, that's very important. But when we bring a union in, the union saying, well, guess what? You guys aren't getting the shit, the fair share of the pie. And which they are for the size of our city, I, we could probably do better, but stuff like take, take home car, I could see some, some cons to that. And I don't know, do we have a, uh, any representative on our side that, that's going to talk our points that we kind of like bought out? I'm just asking because I thought that's what you said earlier, because I don't want to sound like I'm the attorney.
Yes, um, we have, uh, met internally and the city attorney is here present to speak to some of the, uh, issues concerning the contract. And we also have uh, a labor attorney on, uh, Zoom that's available to respond to any questions that you might have as well. Um, Chief Shaw is also here in the audience.
So, Ms. West, this question, because I remember Ms. West saying this when we talked about air nautical miles. We were kind of like unsure how far that reaches. So we were asked to, okay, thirty, thirty air nautical miles, is that the right term?
Thirty air miles, I think.
Air miles.
Yes, sir.
Thirty air miles, which it wasn't clearly defined. So if we go, oh yeah, that's, that's a good point, which it really wasn't defined. I don't think that's fair to bring that to the board as we think in thirty miles, and we don't know exactly how far that is. I would like, before we, uh, really get that thorough consideration, that we actually know exactly how far that is that officers will be taking cars out. Reason why is because I think our officers work ten or twelve hour shifts. So for example, if an officer worked all night long, get off at six A M. after working an exhausting shift, because I know they work hard. And it's, it's a struggle to stay up all night. You've been a former officer, you know that. And so now you have almost an hour drive home. That brings about liabilities for an exhausted or, uh, tired officer to drive. Um, it could be distractions there on the road, stuff like that. So there, those are liabilities that concerns me with the length of the drive and stuff of that nature. So, uh, the amount of times that they're behind the wheel of a car, going back and forth to work, which, as long as they're in that car, the liability lies on that individual or the city? I'm asking, I, well, I'm asking you.
You would have to go to case law. Um, however, uh, we did ask for, there's a provision in the contract and in statute for there to be insurance. Um, I have always advised officers in the past to have an insurance rider on their own policy. And the reason was the previous doctrine under the law is usually you've got what's called the di- dangerous instrumentality rule, which is if you own a vehicle, if you're the registered owner and somebody driving it gets in a crash, you're responsible because you own the vehicle. But there was a superior doctrine in the law that said you can't sue the government essentially. And there were cases where police officers who were off duty going home in the car because they weren't engaged in business at that time, got into a crash, uh, they got sued. And in the particular case, I'm, I'm, I'm talking about, I can't, I can't provide you the name. They also tried to sue the city because officers don't have any money. You can't, you can get a judgment against them, but that's worthless. And they sued the city and the court said, no, you know, you can't sue, you can't sue the government in that situation. So, um, that being said, we do have a provision asking for insurance. Um, and again, we went through the negotiations so you understand, we didn't ask for more money than, as far as pay than what the city was offering. Um, we thought that was, that was fair. And essentially, the, the two things we asked for, again, was, was the, the mileage and we can provide it an exact map if need be. Basically, you can go on, um, some of these websites like Google Earth and just put in thirty miles from a point and it will give you precisely. Uh, I can tell you another alternative way of doing that, which happens in some contracts is they spell out actual roads. Um, no further north than this road, no further south than that road. So we're flexible on how you do it. The idea of the, the thirty map miles was, A, obviously it does help the officers, but B, um, it, it is for somebody who's, who's close, if the difference is they get a take home car or they don't, it can mean the difference between you getting the officer or not.
So did you, did you prepare and brought, bring that map to show us? Because that's what we're negotiating, right?
Um, did I bring that map? No, sir, but I can provide that. Um, that never came up in negotiations. It was never asked. I mean, it's a, it's a fairly, um, standard practice to pull up a map and do, do a range miles.
Air miles. I could understand, I understand it's a difference. So I would like to, because you're asking for thirty air mile. So it is a difference between the thirty air miles and road miles. Am I correct?
Yes, sir. Oh, yeah. It, it could be, it could be quite a big difference. Yes, sir. Yep. Um, and that being said, in negotiations, that's what we're asking for. If the city says no, we'd rather live with, with something else, some other thing, we're open to it.
Any additional questions?
I, I, I think I asked for the clarity. So I just, I would like to see that and know.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the distance that will actually help make these decisions. Yes.
Thirty miles will encompass. Commissioner McCaskill, do you have any questions?
I don't think, um, it was asked and answered. Um, my concern is, is the mileage and, you know, the, in being in the line of duty afterward, going home, the safety. So it was asked and answered, but I wa, I do want to know about the, the mileage where he's asking.
Sure. And if commissioners, if you recall, um, Chief Shaw, uh, did provide a graph um, during one of our, uh, previous meetings, basically breaking down every employee's name, whether they were in admin or field training, on-call, twenty-four-seven sergeant, and, uh, broke it down into whether or not they had a take home vehicle, uh, mapped out the distance in road miles, which, uh, Commissioner Jones, as you've noted, is different from air miles. Uh, there were three that exceeded, um, the thirty miles within road miles calculation. But within the distance in air miles, that folded in the entire force. Um, just barely on some of them, but it encompassed the entire force, which is why I believe you had to ask for the air miles. Uh, I can have this, uh, Ms. Krantz, if you don't have accessibility to this. I can have this, Ms. Grants, if you don't have accessibility to this chart that was provided, I can make a copy real quick and
I would like one.
Circulated to the commissioners if you don't happen to have that. You like that?
Yes, please. I don't have mine with me.
And with that said, that was the one point. The other two points were the just cause for termination and tinted windows. And are those two issues, things we have any issue with or any discussion about?
I want to go back to the thirty miles. She said, what pulled in the entire force? Was it the air miles?
Yeah, the, the, the air miles. Road miles will always be a, a shorter distance than air miles because roads, because they curve and you make turns. Thirty mile circle is always gonna be more than thirty miles road.
So is she saying the air miles allow for more officers to take cars home?
The air miles allows for all the current officers to take vehicles home, which is, as she pointed out in the negotiations, that was our goal, was to, to go look, all of our current officers, let's at least let them be able to take their vehicle home. So that's, that's where that came up with.
And at this point, there are three offices that fall into that category. Is that what you just said, Mr. Bell?
Yes, three, and there's a potential for four.
Okay, yes.
So, so we're talking reasons, just so that I know what you're talking about, what, what departments are in your region that you represent?
Um, I, coastal Florida PBA, we're, we're owned lock, stock and barrel by Florida PBA. Florida PBA is, I believe their highway patrol, their department of corrections, and there are numerous other agencies throughout the state. My area with coastal Florida PBA, we've got Fernandina Beach, Atlantic Beach, St. Augustine, some of the Flagler County sheriffs, the corrections officers. It's the coastal counties from Fernandina all the way as far south as Fort Pierce. The only ones kind of inland are, you hear Palatka and also Oviedo, which is where the University of Central Florida is. Daytona Beach Police Department is one of them. There's, there's little bargaining units and then many different agencies. But in this area, Palatka, the corrections officers and,
PD Police Department.
Police Departments. City of Holly Hill, Palatka Police Depart, I mean, St. Augustine Police Department are the two closest along with Daytona Beach. And then everything else is further north or south from that.
Now with those, we did get a, some statistics and how some other municipalities made this program work. And you mentioned it, you mentioned it about insurance that officers have to get a rider with their own private insurance company and have insurance on their to and from work. Some agencies have the officers pay a monthly stipend, they pay the city a stipend. I haven't heard any of those kind of
Yeah, yeah.
In your presentation. Did you?
I thought there was provided test before.
Again, that's my first time speaking to him.
Yeah. It, it's done differently everywhere and you're correct. Many agencies will say if you're within X number of miles, it's free. Some of them will say if you live in the jurisdiction, you can ride it around anytime. Other agencies say you can only take it to and from work. Other ones say, you know, you can take it to and from work if you're within X miles. If you're outside that, then you pay extra stipend to do it. That's, that's, that's a fairly common way that, that some places do it. It, there, there's untold ways. You can always go to a Google search coastal Florida Police Benevolent Association. Right on our website, we list all of the contracts for the different agencies we represent. You can see how it's done in all of those agencies.
Additional questions?
I just want to admit this publicly, this is my first negotiation to be in with a union and have say so. And at this point, in any kind of negotiation, I like to see it and know exactly what we're negotiating. A negotiation to me is not a proposal and exception. There's some working room and you even mentioned that, there's working room with it. So that's why I'm asking you these questions of what the proposal is. Okay, we, it's basically two things or three. And I haven't seen any concessions or any proposals, even from, I mean, I guess our attorney, I don't know. Did we, did we rebut anything or we just, here's what's on the table, we take it or no?
I can tell you that there are quite a few things that we asked for. And again, what, the way, the way it happened was when you got voted in, okay, we've got to do a contract. And looked at the St. Augustine act for
Ideas, so okay, we want to ask for, we put in the contract. There were numerous things that, that they asked for and the city said no. I will tell you that negotiations were cordial, but the city had no problem telling no to us. And the bottom line is this, under good old chapter four forty-seven, if we can't agree on a term or condition of employment, the last step is you, the city commission, getting to say this is how it's going to be for the next year. So, you know, we, we did go back and forth, we asked for more than the thirty miles originally. When it, for example, on the, on the, on the, the mileage. We asked for adjoining counties. Well, that's huge. They said no, surprise, surprise. I mean, it's, it's classic negotiation where sometimes we'll ask for more than we know we'll get, knowing that they're going to come back and we negotiate if it's something where we can all live with it.
And they said no to adjoining counties?
Yes, sir, they said no to adjoining counties because it's, it's too big an area when you consider.
If you do that, yeah, my, if you do it.
Yeah. It's, it's huge. And I, I didn't even think about just how far, if you go to the farthest point in an adjoining county, that's a lot larger than thirty miles.
Oh, the farthest point, because I was going to say
Yeah.
every county line is within thirty miles.
Yeah.
Oh, I was going to say.
Yeah, we, we didn't ask for it anywhere within the county, we asked for the adjoining counties. Now, some places like Fernandina Beach, although you won't see it in the contract because it was done in what we call an MOU, we negotiated because they came to us and said, hey, we want a bigger area. What they wanted to do was be able to recruit more people from Jacksonville Sheriff's Office. So they go, anybody who's in the adjoining county, basically anybody in Nassau County, which is where they're at. And then I think like the fifty miles into, from, from the police department. So thirty miles is, is like I said, it's kind of a norm from what I've seen. But again, it is done differently in several different jurisdictions.
Okay, Commissioner McCaskill, any further questions? How do we want to proceed? Is there any further discussion? Ms. West, are we off at this point?
So.
Okay, Mr. Bell.
I, I was simply going to say that if there were no other questions, no other comments from the union representative, that was the primary purpose and objective of.
Right, I was going to ask for adjournment of the meeting in a second since I was waiting for the silence to ensue, which it did. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Madam Mayor, before we adjourn, may I ask if the executive session is still needed?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. West.
We'll have to go, if there is no objection to go further negotiation or that, that part from the contract, then the, the commission is going to go into executive session without public comment and without any sort of negotiation to approve. We're not.
Well, you guys want to, before you do that, because I did ask specific, ask a specific ask about showing exactly where thirty miles end and what we're talking about, we're talking about air mile. And we can't, we can't go ahead and approve anything without that.
Can that be pulled up pretty easily, Ms. Grant?
I, I mean, I have Google Earth up, I'm so sorry that I don't know how to do the air miles, but if someone will walk me through it or wants to come over and take the mouse, they can do it.
That's what I hear exactly.
Going to make a suggestion that
I'm not, I'm not saying that, yeah, go ahead.
We can always have one more negotiation session. And what you can do is in your, in your shade meeting, you can advise them what you want them to do. And we can come to the table with a, you know, a map specific, or like I said, or you may give them advice of, hey, we want it to be within these, you know, streets or whatever. We can go to negotiate one more time, reach an agreement, we'll sign it, sign it there and then
Yes.
and, and gratify it later. I would want to thank, thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you. Thank you for.
Thank you. So do we want to adjourn this meeting, go and take executive session to make those kind of requests, basically?
Motion to adjourn.
Are we adjourning or are we doing this? I'm sorry.
If you're doing this, then you're not adjourning.
Right. Okay, sorry.
Because we got to go next door for the executive session.
Right, I understand. So let's do this first, that's fine. I think there's a sneaky suggestion.
I guess because nobody.
We coming back, so you can do that, do that, prepare for the next time. All right, I moved up, we adjourn this meeting.
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn, all in favor? And as far as the executive session is concerned, are we going to wait for this data and then go to executive sessions? We need to make a decision.
Do you want to save anything? Let me do a few things and we'll go next door.
Why are we moving for the executive session?
Do you want me to answer that or you want?
Yes, please.
Okay. Well, this meeting is adjourned, can I technically answer to the entire board? Okay. This is a public meeting of the city commission. So we, as your staff, would anticipate there being multiple members of the public being here. Because public meetings, we anticipate the public being here. So in discussions with the mayor and the manager and, and the city attorney, we felt it best that if there's multiple members of the public, that we not kick them out of the building, considering it is a public building and that it's easier to move the city commission to another site than to move our public.
But then, given that we don't have anybody, I guess that we don't.
Right, so can I end the YouTube now, please? And, because meeting is adjourned, thank you.
Yes.